Okay, I guess we'll call the meeting to order. The November 15th School Board Meeting. And we will, let's see, it's 6:01. And we will start with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great. We're gonna have a short presentation here from student, which is great. I know it wasn't on the agenda, but we're gonna start off with the F.C. Oops. You are good to go. That's a good question.
This is George Hofflin, fifth grade student council rep. Today I will be talking about a few things that are going on at SMS. And now, let's begin. One thing that's going on at SMS is our annual Gather Food Drive. Gather's causes that everyone in the Seacoast has food security that they can rely on. We want to support that by donating to them. Let me tell you about who's gathering what. Kindergarten is collecting oatmeal. First is collecting pasta soup. Second is collecting canned veggies. Third is collecting cereal. Fourth is collecting hand and foot warmers. Fifth is collecting shampoo and conditioner. And staff is collecting non-dairy milks and detergent. If you want to donate, you can go to Gather's website and look at their list of needs. We have collection boxes here soon for your donation. Me and the rest of the student council are hoping to get the food drive started by December, and hopefully it will last till the 100th day of school. When the time comes, me and the other reps will deliver the goods to Gather, and hopefully by that time there will be 100 of each item. And now, let's talk about some Gaga Ball. The Gaga Ball pit is the newest addition to the playground. It is located close to the wooden fence on the edge of the field by the road. Gaga Ball is a fun activity where there are 16 players or less in the pit at a time, and there's always a winner. You're the winner if you're the last one standing in the pit without being hit by the ball knees or below. We hope that, we hope that everyone uses the pit correctly and follows the rules so the pits last. We are hoping to get some kind of turf to help prevent mud and dust after bad weather. This section is about our recent assemblies starring the new book Night Owl Night by author Susan Edwards. Susan Edwards' new book Night Owl Night is about a girl who loves owls and one day wants to be an owl researcher just like her mom. Local owl expert Susan Willoughby brought in a barred owl named George that all the kids got to see. I'd like to think that George was named after me. This was the second whole school assembly this year, and we were glad that both Susan chose to come, to come to our school. Did you know that there are four different types of owls in our Seacoast area? There are the Great Horned Owl, Eastern Screech Owl, Barred Owl, and the Northern Saw Wet Owl, which is the main type of owl in the book. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you enjoy this presentation. You've all been a great audience. Once again, I'm George Hofflin and go SMS.
That was so cool. Does anybody have any questions? No, I think that was a great explanation of what's been going on here. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Great job.
You're welcome.
Okay, great.
Thank you, George.
I know, that was just... Yeah. We'll move on to public input. We can start the clock for 30 minutes. Is there anybody who would like to come speak or address the board? If not, we'll have the timer going for the next 30 minutes. Okay, great. So, moving on to the approval of the minutes. Does anybody want to make a motion to pass the minutes?
They both.
Yeah, because I think...
So moved.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks. All in favor?
Hi.
Bye. All right, great, that was easy. All right, moving on. We're gonna move to superintendent report. We're gonna move manifest and financials up to start first, so 4.4 will start first. So Molly can get out of here.
Sorry, we're having a bad bout of COVID at my house. I have recovered. My kids aren't yet, though. So, I did bring the, sorry, the manifest, which you already signed, so thank you. Included in your board pack is a current year financial. We did have an increase expensive about $201,000 from last month. I did list in here what that is related to. A lot of it does have to do with encumbrances now that we're made aware of and student transportation arrangements that we are now made aware of. Did anyone have any questions on that? Excellent. And then also, I sent out this morning the draft 25 budget. Hopefully you all received that. This is our first look at it. So, we can, and Kate can kind of go over some of the highlights. And then, we'll take the first look tonight and then have a target. If you guys like the percentage or if you really want us to be at a certain percentage, we can kind of go back and sharpen our pencils so that we can come back in December with a more finalized number that which then you can take action on to determine what you want to take to the public hearing. So, I'll let Kate talk to some of the major changes in the budget. If you have... I sent it out in the email, but if anyone needs the hard copy.
Thanks. Yeah, sure, I didn't print it. Thanks. So I guess if you just want to highlight any big things or new things or whatever, that would be great.
On the first page, you'll see a couple of things that look like wild increases. Just so they can hear in the...
All right, thank you.
The minutes. But you'll notice when you look across, it's not large sums of money. It's wild increases because it's percentage-wise. Is that correct? All right? You'll, you'll, part of what you'll see on that front page of why it's at 10.8% is we do have additional regular education ESPs versus special education ESPs. And then, we have three behavior interventionists. We were unable to fill the BCBA position. As you know, we have one BCBA, we had budgeted for two. We were unable to fill. We interviewed, I think, six or seven people. And unfortunately, we were unable to hire any of them. So, we have behavior interventions who are RBTs as well that sort of work under our current BCBA. So those would normally have been in a different line, and now they're reflected in this line because there's a shift in the position. So that's why you'll see a greater increase in that. It's offset elsewhere in the budget because that number went down.
Kate, can I ask you a question? Is that the salary of regular instruction aide?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure it's tracking.
So is that position, we're not gonna fill that BCBA position? Or we don't?
We took it out for F-525. We just have, and we've had it there for two, a year and a half.
Okay.
And we have been unable to fill it. As unfortunate as that is, it is just, I think, part about the BCBA position is they often work in clinics, and the salary is significantly greater than working. And so, it's really hard to find them. We're super fortunate to have them, we have.
Can I ask you one more question?
Yeah.
What are the, what are the counts of staff members? Is that one staff member, two staff members? And the, that we're kind of substituting out in that line?
Okay, so there's three people here that were not three. Yep, that will be, that make up the salary of the position in the other line.
Got it, thanks.
So, the contracted service, which is the 1100 Richmond, if you see that down there. It's about three quarters of the way down. You'll see a, it's an increase. So, for a number of years, the other elementary schools throughout the SAU that are smaller have done, they go to Alnoba where they do sort of like a team building, preparing for the transition to CMS, becoming the fifth grade leaders of the school, like this sort of outdoor team building adventure sort of thing. And our school and Lincoln Street have not done that. And we've found it's a piece that our students need as well as like that idea of like, what does it mean to be the oldest from the building? What does it mean to harness our leadership? We are transitioning to a much better, bigger middle school. And so, we've been partnering with them. Both of our schools have put in our budget to be able to do something very similar. We're actually gonna do it here at Stratum Hill Park. And we're gonna do three different days with Lincoln Street students as well. And we're gonna have people that work for which need your classroom. It's an outdoor environmental camp, and they send people to the schools to do it. And we're gonna do it at Stratum Hill Park. We're hoping to do it at Stratum Hill Park next year. So that's that difference there.
So, next year's fifth graders. Okay.
Can I ask one more question on page one? Or is the format better if you just run through it?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Just a question on the provision for retirees, sick, or cruel. That one, obviously the percentage was ridiculous, but the dollars are not insignificant. So I was just wondering what the difference was this year.
So, for the current STA contract, they notify the SAU as of January 15th if they're intending to retire. So when we do that, we're basing that on the possibility of someone that might retire or some ones that might retire. That is, it is not a definitive. It is not always 100% accurate because I don't know that for sure. I haven't been notified of that. But when you look at people towards the end of their career, you start thinking about how many people are towards that part of it? And how many people are talking about the possibility of potentially doing that? And so that's built around that.
Got it.
So, how does that work? You budget for that money, and then it just rolls over if nobody takes it or...
Correct. So we have to budget for it because if they do choose to retire, we have to have the appropriation to be able to pay it. And we like to pay it in the year that they are retiring. But like Kate said, we won't know that till essentially a year from now. So, we take a look at the age of the employees and who is more likely than not to retire, and we budget that.
Yeah, okay.
That's how we do it.
Thank you.
I would just draw attention. I know this is a conversation sort of work on page of 209 under special education. There was conversations last year about out of district placements. We talked about that. So you'll see that we're super grateful that we're gonna have some more students stay in districts. So there's a, you see a change of line. So if you go to related services, that has gone up. But then the out of district has gone down. And that's because through the support of some of our contracted service companies like Firth Street, we're able to keep the students here and contract around some of the services that they might need.
That was the tuition part in your hand sheet?
Yep. Since I have some of those, the rest of the license act. I don't know. There is a big adjustment. So then, if you're on page three of nine, if you look at psychological services, that's the BCBA that we were talking about. So it's no longer in that position. Or we couldn't hire it. So it's impact on budget in that regard. Moving over to four of nine. So this is the very topic, the, the, the position we're looking for. We are looking for, if you remember when they put the SAU goals in, the SFRS goals that were in the first few packets that she shared, everybody about MTSS, the Multi-Tierred System of Support. So we are in our, we've had MTSS at Stratum for a number of years, but we're really in the second year of our full, deep exploration and building of a new system. We sort of shared that with you guys at the last board meeting. And we see a need for an MTSS coordinator. It is not a curriculum coordinator. It is an MTSS coordinator, but it falls under this, if you were to look at the object that goes with the stated mixture. It wouldn't be an admin position, and it wouldn't be around, it would be about 210 days is our proposal. And part of that is obviously the school year, but then also to be here through our summer learning academy and our ESY because those are often students that are receiving gradient supports and intervention. And so this person would be overseeing that. And previously, we would have done is hired three coordinators to do that. They would no longer be necessary. This position would oversee that programming, and then of course, all of the MTSS that takes place during the school year. So that's that new position in the budget.
Sorry, what does MTSS stand for, the full?
Multi-tiered System of Supports.
It was something like that. I couldn't remember the exact break.
Yeah, it's an O.
Yeah.
Kate, there was a reduction on the next line item, curriculum and assessment supplies. What was that one?
So, this year we bought a number of new literacy materials that we don't need to duplicate this year.
So, just to go back real quick. So that person would not coordinate curriculum?
Well, they would certainly be involved in curriculum, right? So what, we are looking at all the data that we get, like the data we review. Sometimes there's a universal data that comes out of it, like example, when we adopted a new Fox program or a new phonemic awareness program. So that's curriculum, right?
Got it.
But it is not a curriculum coordinator. It's more of like a data systems. It's more of a systems than a curriculum.
Got it.
They will do both, right?
Right.
You can't do one without the other.
Yeah, yeah, right, no, okay.
There's a lot of data entry. There's a lot of organizing for efficiency of who gets what services and what groups and what places. There's a lot of that.
Okay.
Is this, can I ask one more question on this? So the salary that we're determining for that is you probably put in a top line of what you ideally, and you will...
Yeah, yeah, we looked at.
And it's based on experience and everything else, right?
Yeah. You're not gonna find someone in this position that has a bachelor's. You're not gonna find someone who only has a few years of experience. This is something that you had to have been in education for a good amount of time, and you're gonna have your master's. So it does put you in a different bracket.
Thanks.
The other large reduction on that page, you see, is under technology. That really is directly related to, last year there was a giant bump in technology. It is not, it's not like we're requesting, last year we had to replace a ton of equipment, as you remember. And additionally, we replaced a lot of the staff equipment as well, the student and staff equipment. And we don't need to obviously do that again. I can share with you that we have been having our monthly principals meetings or at central office. And the new tech, I don't know his name. I'm sorry, Jason.
Jason.
What is the name of his title? I know his name is Jason.
He's the Director of Technology.
Okay, so he's been working with Chris around like a five and six-year plan to look at technologies so that we don't have these dips. Like how can we prevent these large years versus years? So it's more consistent for the communities. And he's met with us twice so far to talk about different proposals of ways to do that. So that's been a really nice conversation for us to think more strategically and long-term, which is nice.
Great.
Do we know what's still in this budget? For what are the large, what are the biggest things that we're working on? And if you don't have it now, it's not...
No, I can point it out.
Because we're still saying basically 60% of what we did last year we need to do again. Right, to some extent, I think about that.
Yep, so I can speak a little bit without giving the specifics. But so what we try to do right now is a second grader will get a Chromebook and take them through. So, but then you, when that, that group gets to fifth grade, then you do have to replace the whole grade level because they start with the next second grade group. So it's like that cycle. So that has to happen. That will always have to kind of continue until we figure out something a little bit more consistent. And that's part of what we're trying to look for is like, how do we do a four or five-year plan? The piece that I think is really hard and different about an elementary school is that kindergartners and first grades really having a Chromebook is a little bit harder to navigate, even when the touchscreen's on Chromebooks right now. And there's some good research coming out that might be more promising, that they might be more user-friendly for five and six-year-olds. But they're very different than an iPad, right? So we're kind of like, we can't do a seven-year cycle or a six-year cycle because it's just not appropriate technology for parents. But we are working, trying to come up with some other solutions.
It's like getting beat up.
Oh, boy, do they ever. We had that conversation, too.
Well, love, we say love.
Would you like me to get more specifics?
No, no.
Is that okay? Okay. I think that's all for page nine. Page five is really district expenses. So SAU contracts, administration, board expenses, auditing, legal. It's things that we really kind of stayed flat for the most part. Or like aren't in my control or, you know, there's more contract and stuff.
The only thing that is up is the offices, office of the superintendent, and that is your piece of the pie that we talked about at the joint board.
So that's up 16%. Is that...
Yep, so...
Each district is up 16%?
No, so it's divvied up based off of 50% on ADM, which is enrollment, and 50% based on equalized valuation. So your, you may be...
I know, you've talked about...
I think the cooperative was the lowest. And all the elementary schools were the highest because of the way enrollment and ADM shifted.
Okay. Yeah, that's pretty behind, huh?
And that was the health, the health stuff was the biggest piece of that, I think.
So that is a big piece of why the SAU budget went up. But also, we had the two new, the, the two things in there was the strategic plan as well as the grants coordinator.
And a piece of the ADM, if I remember correctly, and I don't want to drag us down a little. A piece of the ADM is also tied to property values of the town.
That's the equalized valuation. So it's 50% ADM, which is enrollment.
Uh, sorry.
50% equalized valuation, which is the valuation of your town.
Okay, all right.
We know you talked to us about that in the other room, but then when we do it here, it just goes...
No worries, no worries, no worries.
So, page six of nine. The biggest jump or change really is down under care and maintenance. Obviously, we have some things we just need to intend to in the age that it is. Kate's actually grabbing my notebook so I can give you the specifics that we're looking to sort of keep up or maintain. That's just some important things. One of the things you will see under safety and security is it's less than it was last year, but there are some things that we are looking to do. We had a fire inspection last week, and we have five doors that we would like to put on the magnets that can be released when the security system goes off. We did that last year for a couple of doors. And after the inspection that we had last week, we, through the conversation, it made sense that we have a few more doors, particularly in the cafeteria and the space between the cafeteria and the bathrooms where it's safe is, that their recommendation is that we have those on magnets as well for security purposes.
I'm just super curious. What happened with the copier, release, maintenance thing? How do we, how do we make out on that one? That one is the second line item.
So Ashley Lambert, who works for the Department of Asset does all of that work for us. And she's unbelievable because she works with all the tools and the coffee machines. And sometimes it's treating them up. On the tail end, and they get cheaper. Sometimes they get swapped. Like, and she does all of that, which is nice.
Nice.
I don't need to worry. Sorry about it. Um, is that it? I'm gonna have to...
I think it was just the operation of the plant stuff. If you had the...
Yeah, the, the maintenance.
And then the, the assistant maintenance salaries. If you could speak to like the staffing changes on it. What are they doing there?
Yep, so actually, so the, his, the salary is just the typical for our facility directors, obviously, 119. We have a series of both year-round employees. And in the summer, we hire summer staff to help us with all the work that gets done in the summer. And that's just a reflection of those things. In addition, we have a couple gentlemen that work for Tim that come in on the weekends during the basketball season and then in the evenings as well. And so it covers those sort of additional pieces that we need to pay for throughout the year. I appreciate your patience while I'm at it. Oh, okay. Sorry, I found it. So, in that involved is that we have the, we have a shed out back over here that has electricity on it. And that shed is dilapidated. It's preventing some of the electrical stuff. It's out by the fields that needs to be replaced. That's over there. It has the electrical pump for all the sprinklers that we have. So that has to be replaced. We have several carpets that we need to continue to pull up, that need to be tiled and those need to be pulled up. And so those are the bigger items that are going into the repairs and maintenance. Great news. He switched from waste management to casella. We talked a lot about that last year. It's actually a $17,000 saving, which for me is like a mind-bending amount of pressure mobile.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
It's great.
So we're excited about that as well.
Do you have, sorry, go ahead, please. Do you have specifics around the site improvement piece? Or were some of those, some of what you just said, part of that as well?
So the site improvement is part of that as well. But it's also, we have a painting we need to finish. We have a number of, which also came out of some of our drills. We have a number of the offices. If you remember, we converted some of the closets into offices. And we were having a drill, and we realized that you can't, there's not a speaker in there, so you can't hear. So some of that is being looked at. Additionally, we have, we use the, we utilize the fields a lot. And our outdoor horns only project like 30 feet. And so we brought some people in to talk about whether or not we should have horns that go further out. So that would require some significant electrical work to get them out there. It really was a matter of just, you know, homeland security, safety, communication, things like that that can fall into the operations of things.
Can I ask one more question on that before we move on? Can I ask one more question on that before we move on, on the, not on that, but on the property and liability insurance? Just wondering why that premium seems to have gone up.
So, I can talk to that. So, that's actually, we had under budgeted that in previous years. So, what we did is a 3% increase over current year actual invoices. So, it was previously under budgeted on our part.
Okay.
I have a quick question also. What is homeless transportation?
So, by state law and federal law, if you have students that are homeless, we pay for their transportation to get them to school.
Wouldn't that be just a bus service? What is different about it?
So, often those families may not be residing in Stratum anymore. So, they were, they lived in Stratum, they rented, they had a home, and they'd be, and then are homeless, and so they may not be living in Stratum anymore, but this is their town of record, because this is where they most recently lived. So, they might live in another town, and we pick them up and bring them to school.
Okay, and why isn't that every year? It's just in a couple of years?
Prior to two years ago, we had, we didn't have any homeless students.
Gotcha.
Maybe, I don't know, just asking, trying to figure out, so, if somebody's here for a portion of the time, but then they're somewhere else, so if they're here and they had a home of record, and then they become homeless, but they're in another area, they're still in our district.
Until they're permanent residents somewhere else, they're considered aware of their place of record.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Right, absolutely. Just trying to define that.
There's one other thing. Oh, and special education transportation went down as well. We, if you don't have to pay for, place that's listed, we talked about whether, you don't have to pay for their transportation, transportation, whatever it is. We did put back in money for field trips. If you remember, recently last year with the GMR, we were more of what we typically like to be, if it worked. So, that was one of the ways that we were able to reduce the budget. And now that we're in a very different place with our budget, we really wanted to be able to do that again. It's really important. I think we love to send some field trips, and it's just another place that we should be able to offer for equity reasons. Of course, we always provide scholarships for those families that need it, but this sort of prevents going down that way.
Do we have anything planned for that, like, do we have field trips planned?
We have great field trips every year. They do Oregon to Penn, they do Boston, that's more the fifth grade. They go to Seaport Science Center, they, of course, Smith Music Hall, they do all sorts of things.
In Seaport, they go to UNH.
Yes, Seaport, they go to the pool. That's scheduled for December 7th this year. Seaport starts again the Monday after Thanksgiving.
And again, is this to subsidize folks who are not able to afford it, or is this paying for the program itself?
This is for everybody, so we divide this up by grade level, so each grade level gets a chunk of that money, and then they decide what field trips they're going to do associated with their curriculum.
Got it. How do we not have, I'm sorry, but how do we not have anything like that? Well, we had something last year, but I don't think we...
We, so...
Our actuals were like half that.
Yeah, we also have COVID, so we're going on field trips. No, but like, if you're looking, no, but if you're, it was, even a lot of places still weren't open to those people coming. And the other piece that is being challenging is everybody knows we talk about it every time, and I feel bad bringing up buses are a challenge, right? So, we used to be able to get buses in a very different way, and now it's much more challenging. So, even scheduling field trips, you have to get back by the end of the school day or before the end of the school day, because they have to do their school runs, which never, that didn't work in an issue before. So, like, for example, this year for Boston, they're actually going to charter buses. They did it last year as well, because to try to get to Boston and back within a school day is next to impossible, right? So, we're able to do some day trips, but it's just harder when, like, that's why it's great if you go to Seaport Science Center or Portsmouth, because it's, you know, it's away.
Maybe one more, Molly, on the life insurance. I can understand the health insurance. What is life insurance? It's not terrible, 15%?
So, that, is that, life is, is that unum now?
15%, I don't know, issue of them.
So, yeah, we can look into that, but it would have been based off of actual bills, so if it did go up, it would have had a, we would have under budgeted it in previous years. And then for the health insurance part, we did look at your November bill, so your most actual bill. So, it is higher than the 9.9, because people had made changes since the last budget. But we can definitely look into the life insurance piece. We would have...
Just change providers, so make sure it actually... But it depends on the, the sort of, the type of thing.
And then in food service, we did add for the cost of food, as you all go to the grocery store. I'm assuming you know exactly why we did that.
God, I was taking a second, I needed to trigger my thought. I'm sorry, we just got back from the service. Five years ago, I think it was my second year here, we realized that the duct system had never been cleaned at SMS in the 30 years the building had been around. And at the time, it was a $68,000 project in order to have the duct system cleaned. And when we met with them, they said, basically, starting at about year four or five, you're going to start doing inspections rather than having $68,000. This was five years ago, so I can't imagine now. So, part of what we broke it down into is, it's like a five-year cycle, and it's an additional, basically roughly $12,000 every year. And if we just get on that cycle, it'll keep our budget much more like equitable and even and steady. Although, you know, as the building changes, that might flux a little bit, but this gives us an idea. And they broke the building down into like five zones to make it really, like, they could be in an area, get it done, get in and out of the building over the summer, so it didn't just show up all summer.
I think that's all.
Yeah, it would be for operations.
I mean, just keep on that side?
We got it, yep. But we couldn't, it didn't make sense to start right away with the cycle, because we had just had the whole building done.
So, is that pretty much all the change?
It's really the highlights. A lot of the other stuff in the, that was just based on, like, someone who did something, and then went to school, and walked us up.
Yeah, so that's a 4.72% increase, which, I mean, after last year, that's...
It's half of last year. GMR is also not long as your either, it's nine...
9.9.
Oh, it is, wow.
Well, and also, remember last year, of course you do, where the day extended, and so you guys ended up not getting supplies and stuff? So, all of that, you're getting what you need supply-wise, okay, for this year, yeah.
Great.
Can I ask you a question? Might be from Molly. Please educate me on the, on the FICA.
FICA?
The government, like, I know that it's a contribution for, like, I think it's Medicare and Social Security or something like that, but it seems like it's...
So, it's a function of salary, so...
Right.
FICA is, yeah, so it's, both the employer and the employee have to pay 7.65%. So, as salaries go up and down, so do FICA and retirement. And so FICA for everybody, 7.65%. And, but then for retirement, it depends if you're categorized as an employee or a teacher. Employees, 13.55, I think, percent, and teachers is 19 point something? I'd have to look at the exact number, but anytime salaries go up and down, FICA and retirement will go up and down by the same amount.
Is that a function, it's a demographic function of what we have today? Is that people kind of tiering up in the higher brackets and...
And higher steps are more...
And the stuff we did maybe last year in terms of raises or something, that were a little higher?
Yeah, it's just one tracks, I mean, we have two associations, and if their steps or their contract change, it would affect that.
Or when you add a position like the MTSS coordinator, that is now adding a whole new person into retirement and FICA.
Got it.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Or any comments on that? And do you need, what do you need from us?
Or is there any suggested changes that you guys want us to bring back to you for next month? Is there a percentage target you want us to come back with next month? Or does this look good for next month? I guess we would just be looking for a direction on which way you want to do it.
I mean, I personally think it's a really good first shot at it.
It is, yeah.
I like it when it tracks with like the inflation, because I think that was very easy for us to explain last year, because inflation was super, super high. I think we're like, I think it's like 3.2, it was higher earlier in the year, I think it's like 5. We're hopefully trailing towards the right direction in terms of inflation. I think as an annualized average, it's probably about right, but I just, we spent a lot of money, we spent a lot of money last year. I don't, I'm not saying it's, this is kind of a first read on it and get some information, but I don't know.
And our next meeting will be a fact meeting, that's before, I believe, right? We looked at that, so we'll have our fact meeting, and then we'll have our, the board meeting on the 20th, so, okay. Okay, anybody else? I mean, I agree, I think that this was like a first time through, and the percentages are...
Pretty reasonable.
Pretty reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, I'm on the Budget Advisory Committee, and this is pretty low for various schools. But I do agree with you, right, because if you were to add back in that salary and all of that, it would, you know, spike it up pretty quickly.
Yeah, and I think that had, I think that has effects, I think that has a trailing effect.
As far as, I can't remember how we did it last year, maybe this is a question for Chris when he comes back, but do I need to coordinate with the people who are on the fact that are representatives that came last year? Do you remember how? Oh, he does, okay, perfect, so we don't have to, okay, great, all right. So, yeah, I think that that's it. Thanks, Molly.
All right, thanks, guys.
Go get some sleep.
I know. Okay, so, moving on to 4.1, the class action settlement follow-up. I was on that call, so...
Oh, good.
It was, I think we made that lawyer's day. She was like, this was the easiest call I've had all week. It was very short and brief. Basically, the, what she told us was, if we want to opt out, we have to do so, and I can't remember the date, but I can find it out. I think it's like December 11th. We have to notify them and just say, we don't want to be part of it, and that's it. If we stay in, really, the only thing that would happen is if they win the lawsuit, we'll get money, and if they don't, we won't, and that's it. So, it's pretty straightforward. There wasn't really any other information that she could really give us. There wasn't going one way or the other. She said, it's totally up to you guys, if you want to stay in or not. I mean, to me, it made sense, just leave it the way it is, see if we hear from them, I guess. That's kind of the way I left with it, so if everybody's okay with that.
So, I mean, the only thing is, right, these class actions, if you stay in, your recovery is significantly reduced, if you were going to litigate it yourself, and so is there merit to the claims, or is there some...
So, there's two claims, one against, I hope I can remember this, DuPont, and one against 3M. And the 3M, we're not part of, but that one, she said they have way more chance of probably winning that one, or, I don't know how she put it. But whereas the DuPont, it's going to be harder for them to prove that the chemical came from that specific company, that they're finding in the water, so she wasn't as confident that that one would come to fruition. So, I don't know 100% to answer your question, but that was kind of, I mean, this is huge. I mean, it's, she was in New Orleans, and there's, all over the country, there's people that they're doing this on behalf of, so... Yeah, I don't know. Are you okay with that response, or do you want me to try to find out more?
I'm okay with that response. So, it's basically students at the school? Is that what the fact pattern is?
No, so the water is found in, help me with this, a custodial?
In the, in the custodial closet?
The, the water that was with the PFAS, it was coming from there. They're not drinking it.
But, but all of the other drinking wa, or all of the drinking water period is perfectly fine?
Yeah, that was, that was basically the findays that they came by.
And the, so, the water that comes into Stratum, where the school comes from two wells. One of them had none, and one had a little, and so you can literally like change the parts per million, like how many products measure, to adjust that really, really easily within our building. We're very fortunate that we have two wells to be able to do that. That was really the thing, so, because already our parts were, it's so low that it's not measurable amount in terms of reaching the threshold of violating any of those things. I don't know, it'll be tomorrow.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Any sense of how much we might make from it? No?
No, I mean, I think a couple hundred bucks, yeah, probably not much by the time it's...
Depends on how many people stay in and...
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, so I don't know when we'll, when we'd hear anything next, but that's, it was just kind of the update on that one. Okay, so we'll move on to plant-based milk alternative, and I will take that one. So, I'm going to kind of share the results of the survey that was sent out. Thanks for doing that, Kate. So, for, there were 68 total responses to the survey. So, for the question, would your child choose a plant-based milk alternative if it was offered as a beverage option at lunch? There were 45 people who said no, that's 66%. There were 23 people who said yes, and that was at 33%. As far as the question for would you be willing to pay any additional costs, 43 people said no, that's at 63%. And 25 people said yes, and that's at 37%. So, yeah, so those were the results from the survey. I don't know if anybody had any thoughts since that last meeting, or wanted to put any input in, now that we've kind of seen where people are at in the community. I mean, and one of the thoughts I had was that we could definitely, I mean, it wasn't an overwhelming response, I mean, 68 responses, but maybe we could revisit this in the spring, when we're going to set the school lunch prices for the following year, and take a look at the pricing at that point. Is it going to be going up? I don't know, just kind of some thoughts, if anybody has any other...
So, it couldn't be modified for this year? Is that correct?
Well, last time we talked with, maybe, I should have kept Molly here, I didn't think about that. The last time, we, the food services budget was like over by like a lot, I remember the number she had mentioned. So, that was where we were at before, was, and she said it's looking like it's going to be the same.
I was going to say, I think there's a concern that it might be the same way this year, right?
Right.
But if participants are willing to pay for it, I mean, could it be done this year if the people who want it are willing to pay for it?
But that would have to be a separate setup, right, because either way, it's still, it would be part of the entire spend of the school. And so, if only, was it 20 people responded?
25 people said that they would pay.
Right, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but we would end up purchasing a whole bunch, and then if only 28 people...
Gotcha.
Bought it, then, and obviously, I don't know anything about purchasing policies of food, but my guess is we would have to buy more than 28 cartons.
So, we have, actually, we work with like a vendor company that works through the whole SAU, that with most of our food and drink are purchased through. I don't, it was a new company that they selected to share it at March, or they need a new company, and I would have to see what's available on that, because that's really where we get almost all of our product. And then, yeah, you don't buy small amounts, it's not...
Right.
Right, so you'd have, it'd have to be a separate set aside where the 28 people are paying effectively whatever the wholesale prices we would buy. Otherwise, it just still becomes a burden on the school. Either they pay for the whole thing, and it's outside of kind of the standard lunch offering, or to...
Like an hour-long type of thing, is kind of what you're talking about.
Yeah, right.
If you have it, you can pay for it separately.
Yeah.
Are there any other things like that, that we currently offer to students? Has Ann Walsh weighed in at all about this?
Just, I think, from Ann's perspective, or anybody in the capers, we're short-staffed already, and so it's just another thing to be thinking about. I mean, right now, we're in there, and I don't think it's a yes or no. I think it's more about like, how does this logistically fit into a complicated system, ensuring that, how do we do this in a way that actually doesn't derail the rest of it? And I don't think it's a yes or no, I think it was just like, how do we make that work? And what does that look like? Is it something that I have to go and purchase on my own and bring? Like, I think it's more like logistically, and if the board wants to move forward with it, they'll sit down and come up with a plan, and then come back and like, this is how we think this can work. I think she was reading more from like, what's the direction around this before, and now we're trying to figure out the system and the solution.
Because we'll see, figure out what kind. There's multiple plant-based milk alternatives, right? Oat milk, almond milk, soy, cashew, d, so it's more complicated than...
Is that something that you would even, we would have the capability to do, like...
To sell it?
Yeah, like when you go into your app and you click on that, and saying, I'm going to get it this day, like, I don't, how...
So, each student uses their, they have an ID card, and they ring it through, and it rings through, and they get breakfast or snack, and when they get lunch, I would have to ask if the system can do that. I don't know, because I've never done that, right? So, it would be a question about like, does the software at the elementary level allow us to say this item? And when they ring it through, can they push like a button, like, yeah, for sure, like, oh, they ordered a plant-based milk, and it rings in on their card. Because that's how lunch is done, and it's charged to families, and families know when they have a balance, and they pay or don't pay, and I would ask them, you know? You're asking, you're tagging, but, so that would be the way that that would, I think, we'd have to ask. I don't know that system, and we certainly, you could, that's kind of the question. I think if the board wants us to look into that, we could figure out that's a system.
I think there's two pieces. There's the piece, do we subsidize it?
Right.
Or do we charge for it? If we charge for it, does the price, does the overhead involved in operating it make it more expensive than buying it and just bringing it as a parent? Unless there's a convenient, convenience aspect to it. The piece is that we don't get subsidized for the purchases that will go to that, which is just another additional cost, though it doesn't seem like we, that that's a huge impact.
Another thing to consider, as you've got, if you've got those 28 people who are willing to pay, out of those 28, how many students who need a plant-based milk product may also be allergic to almonds? Or may also be allergic to other types of things that are made with that plant-based? So, it may be that out of those 28, you know, five of them need this kind, and six of them need this kind. So, there's a lot of complications to Kate's point when thinking about being able to offer it. It's not as simple as just a plant-based milk.
And all of them have different flavors, because all of them by themselves don't taste good.
There you go. There's also that.
That's true, actually, that's true, you're probably safe just defaulting to... That's true, that's fair. I guess I didn't think about that. If you default to chocolate, it's just going to be fine across the board, you're right.
Katie, is there any more time on public comment, by any chance?
Oh, are we done with the public?
It is past the public time.
I just wanted to get some input from, I think we have audience members who are...
Yeah, yeah.
Good call.
Perhaps we could do it...
Yeah, do we need to vote to extend public input, or is that just... Do we, does, do we want to do that, just if anybody would like to speak? All right, so, do I have to set a ti, like a time?
Yes, and make sure that it maintains the same amount for each person.
Oh, I was going to say, like, we'll open it for...
10 more minutes.
Okay, I'd like to take a motion that we will extend public input for 10 more minutes, and allowing people to speak for three minutes at a time. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Does anybody want to come speak?
That would be me. Oh, go for it. I have a question. So, hello. So, my granddaughter has blue eyes, but apparently she, you know, inherited from me that this thing, it's all mother's fault, as you know. So, but just, I have a question. So, did you say that all the vendors, I say 16 vendors, they use all same, same vendors?
We have a, SAU 16 has a, like, is there called a conglomerate?
Yes.
They have a conglomerate where they have like a...
A cooperative.
A cooperative where they all order from the same company for almost all of their products.
Okay, so, so that means all SA, under SAU 16, the schools do not have any plant-based milk options? None of the schools?
I actually wouldn't be able to answer that, because we're set, all while we're all under the same SAU, we are separate districts, and so I don't know, I don't know what other districts do.
Okay, so, so, so you don't know if, if any schools are offering this or not? Okay, okay, just, just that was, okay, that's all, thank you.
Would you please state your, your name and your address? I forgot about that, yeah, okay, thanks.
That was the Dori Kobayashi, she's my mother. I don't think you have to do that. All right, I'm Eileen Berry, I was the one that brought up the whole plant-based thing. Yeah, my daughter is lactose. She can have small bits of dairy, but a lot, you don't want her in the classroom. You met her today, she's a ham. But, no, I think, I don't want to overcomplicate the whole plant-based milk issue. I think, you know, yes, there are many different types of plant-based milk, so are there regular milk too. You can make the same argument for either way you go. I would suggest if we do decide... I would suggest, if we do decide to do this, to not do a nut milk, because we know a lot of people do have nut allergies. Oat milk seems to be, oat milk or like a soy milk, a lot of people don't have allergies to, so that's what I would recommend if we do decide to go there. But that's it, I don't really have anything else to say about it, so. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, you may.
Yeah, just wondering if you could weigh in on like, if it's more expensive to you as a parent to pay to have the school provide it versus for you to buy it and send it to school? Is that, would that like? So, okay, for expense, it's easier, because I know that, you know, kids, when they get their lunch, they are offered a, a milk beverage. So for her to be able to just say, I don't want the two percent milk, I don't want the chocolate milk, I'll have my plant-based milk. And they can just put it on the plate and whatever. I also wanna mention, too, there are shelf-stable, um, plant-based milk options for all, all the kinds, so. And they do last a lot longer than dairy milk. So I know that that's a concern, that you'd go and buy a bunch of this milk and it potentially go bad. But there's plenty of shelf-stable options as well, so.
Anything else?
I just don't know how to make this decision. So, does anybody have?
I would recommend that we do just a little bit more research, if that's okay. We can reach out to our other districts to see if there are other options there, but also just to, we can also check with other folks that are in the cooperative, just to see.
No, and I appreciate, I appreciate even the opportunity to, to discuss it, so.
Frankly, I'd love to know what the price, like, what a estimated price would be to the student or to the parent.
If we could do that, that would be huge. And then, Kate, if you can talk to Kitchen about the logistics of all that.
So I'm just really sure, estimated price, also like costs, sometimes like bringing it in, if that's, is that what we're asking? Like, just to figure out what that looks like back there, okay?
Or I don't even know if this is an option, too, to like bring the cash in, to.
Whatever the mechanisms are.
How we did it in the old days, you know? Exactly.
He was a poker on the playground.
Used him as pogs, pogs. No, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so maybe we'll put it, oh, yep.
Just, hello, my name is Mary Ady, I'm a Stratum resident, and my kids are all grown, but I did have a, a child with a, with an allergy to some dairy milk. I'm just wondering, what percentage of the school population does this affect? Where there are severe allergies or a problem? Because if it's miniscule, as a mom, I always sent my kid to, to school with her milk. And the teacher happened, in her little, uh, you know, K through fifth grade, they had refrigerators, so she could put her milk there and just grab that when she went to lunch. So if it's only a small percentage, I think to avoid any liability issues, would it be better just to say to the parents, just go ahead and send your, your milk and we'll store it for your child? Is that, is that a way to do that? Rather than trying to complicate how, you know, if it's plant-based, or is it nut-based, or is it this or that?
So I don't know the exact percentage, particularly when it comes to like dairy versus nut. I don't know that, but my health office would know that, I just don't know off the top of my head what percentage it is. I don't, and I don't wanna like make an estimate, I would feel.
Right, right.
That would be appropriate, given I'm not really sure. But I could certainly find out if that's something that I was wanting to try to find out what percentage of students have.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Put it back on the agenda, maybe, in December, and have like a quick update on it?
The only thing I would add to that is, um, the number could be potentially higher, but we only know what is shared with us by families, right? So I can share with like what has been reported to Nurse Lilly, because that's how we would know that, but I just don't wanna, there could be seventeen families that just haven't shared that, and I just don't, I just wanna be clear about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Anybody else?
I just also wanted to note that Ann's coming in, in March for.
Oh, that's right, that's a good point.
Presenting on.
On food services, yeah, that's a good point, too.
We also are proposing more of a budget for food, twenty-five.
Yep. That's a good point. Okay. All right, well, I think that sounds like a good plan for now. So moving on to meeting calendar review. That is, we need to vote on this tonight, to have the public hearing on January ninth, with a board meeting to follow directly after. And then to have the town meeting on March fifth. And some of the reasoning behind those specific dates, because they're on Tuesdays, is just because I think Brentwood's having theirs Wednesday of that week, and so we kinda had to shift to see who is available when. So I just wanted to make sure that those dates were okay with everybody, and then we'll just have to vote to have that.
I won't be here for the whole month of January.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm required to be at those, but just FYI. Okay.
The public hearing is. Well, the town meeting's when they actually do the vote. So the public hearing is just when we're kinda like presenting it to the public and they can speak to it.
Okay.
Or ask questions and things, so, yeah, I think that's okay. Do those, are those dates okay with?
You said it was the ninth?
The January ninth and then March fifth.
Yeah, so then election, they, people vote on the twelfth?
The twelfth.
Yeah.
That's the town, yep.
Those are fine.
Everybody, we'll have to have somebody make a motion. And what, should the wording be on that to?
To accept the dates of?
Okay. Does somebody wanna make that?
Fill in the blank.
I'll, so move.
Okay.
Do I have to say it? I've moved that we accept the dates in the.
The public hearing is January ninth?
The public hea, hearing is January ninth?
With a board meeting directly after.
With a board meeting directly after.
And then the town meeting, March fifth.
The town meeting, March fifth.
Okay, thank you. Well done.
At six, are these all at six?
Oh, I didn't ask that, but probably, I think that's who, we usually do them, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and then, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, great, thank you. Okay. Moving on to board reports and committees, do we have a building committee update?
Do we ever? Yeah. Let's see. So I just wrote, just a brief, I, I feel like sometimes when I just like talk, it's not helpful. I'll just pass these around, so it's two pages.
Oh, it's two pages.
I just wrote a brief memo, so we met yesterday with, so.
Back to back, oh, they are.
Yeah, they're.
Yeah, it's two pages, yeah.
It's two pages.
Sorry.
Yeah, the first page says, um, current status, the second page says, next steps. I do have some extras, if anybody's interested.
One more? Here you go. There's, yep, there's two pages.
Enjoy, yeah. So yeah, so the building committee has been meeting monthly, usually led by Brad Prescotts, who's from Banwell. And then lately, we've been enjoying the company of some engineers. And at these meetings, we spend a lot of time talking about what does our dream school look like? And there were three plans offered, the building committee has narrowed it down to one layout at this point. It really has limited release, it's really the committee, where you can see the members at the top of this memo. And then Kate has looked at some of these things with the teachers and, and building staff, too, but very preliminarily. So it's a very, very small committee at this point. So what this memo does is sort of talk about the current status. So when we looked at our current layout, these were just some of the questions we were considering. And so you can just see like, you know, it's, it's a hefty, it's a hefty bit of work. At our meeting yesterday, we started thinking about, we started getting some very, very preliminary numbers. We're not gonna share those, because there is a lot more information that needs to be part of those numbers. And that is the second part on page one here, which just lists like some of the things we're still waiting for that are gonna influence any kind of cost of this project. So not only all the questions we've considered, but also, you know, we need to check out what the septic is doing, what would be interest in inflation rates, what would be the term of the bond? What are some of the mechanical elements? Are we going solar? Are we, you know, gas, oil? What is, obviously, we need a lot of community input on the building. Are we gonna add this great gym? Do we not need a gym? So all of these kind of things, obviously, weigh into the cost. So these are all the things we talk about at our meetings. On page two, I just did sort of next steps, and this is really what the committee kind of wanted to talk to the school board about tonight. So our proposal is that at our next board meeting on December twentieth, that Brad and some of the engineers come to that meeting and perhaps sort of go through the current plan, the current building layout plan that we have. And they can answer questions and, you know, for example, like when you look at this page one questions, you know, do you feel strongly that the building should have AC? Do you feel strongly that, you know, the bus loops or what parent pickup looks like? So all of those things, we invite you to ask questions at that December twentieth meeting. Pending everybody on the school board sort of approval or, you know, idea that we should move forward with the, with the layout as it currently exists. Perhaps then in January, we would invite, you know, FAC, the Select Board, the Stratum Energy Commission, to hear a similar briefing about the layout. And then I just wanted to also just kind of lay out in very rough numbers what the next year would then look like. So we would really start building up our committee. So right now, this very small committee listed on page one, you know, obviously, we need so many more people involved. Teachers, you know, all the building staff, we need townspeople, we need so many people to weigh in and to, you know, come out with questions and comments and support of this project. In theory, it would go on the ballot March of two thousand twenty-five. And then assuming it passes and the town approves it, which we've been hearing we need about a two-thirds vote, I think, because of the cost. Then in spring and summer of twenty-five, we would start doing some design. Fall of twenty-five, the project goes out to bid. April twenty-six, construction begins with really heavy pushes during the summer. And then September twenty-eighth, it's all done, guys.
Great.
Beautiful new building.
Beautiful new building.
I know.
Well, and as I was driving here, I was thinking about, what about our neighbors? What about, right, I mean, there's a lot of people. So anyway, I just thought maybe this would be helpful. All of these things are on the Google Drive, I've been taking notes during all of our meetings. You know, I welcome feedback, obviously, the architect's report is on our Google Drive. So anyway, I guess what I need from the board tonight is if you guys have any questions? And then also, would you want to have the architect and engineer come next? What do you think sort of about my next steps? Do you guys have anything to add?
I think that was great.
Yeah, this is good.
This is good, it's a lot of information.
Yeah, it is a lot of information, and that's why I put these questions here, just because, you know, when Brad is here next week, or next month, you know, you just, what do you even ask, right? It's so, it's pretty overwhelming.
I have a question for you, Jen, on the, if it doesn't, if it doesn't pass. Do we, I know a lot of this, just for folks who might not have been part of this process and visiting tonight, a lot of this has to do with some of the capital expenses that need to happen in this building, anyway. We're trying to coalesce some of that around potential remodeling, innovation, other things in the way that we see it. If it were not to pass, do you also have a timeframe and plan for how we could approach? Is there a Plan B? And then is there like a Plan C on the capital expense?
Yeah. I mean, I think the answer is no. I, we have been talking a lot about how to design a warrant, like, what, how, how does the warrant go? Like, for example, would, could you do basic mechanics as one element of the warrant? And then the gym as another element? You know, how, how could you design that? Yeah, I'm not sure what that answer would be, but that's a good question. I think that's something like Brad would probably be able to help us with.
For sure, so could EEI, who's doing the studies, like, that they're engineering for. And I think, too, that they can show you when they break out costs, like, um, this is to fix the current structure, ways that is a part of that, it's like a breakdown. It would be like, this amount, I need to actually update the system within the structure you currently have that have to be updated. Or should be, I guess, some of them have to be like immediately, and others are like three or five years from now, right? Because we have that timeline. And then there's breakdown of like, this is additional space that you'd be creating if you added. So there is that kind of breakdown, they give you a rough figure. It doesn't necessarily, here's a plan, how you do the parts, but it does show you what the difference is and where the money would be broken up. To give you an idea of like, if we didn't do it, we'd still be spending this much money just to do this.
I just think that's helpful information, potentially, for everybody like us.
I think he also mentioned that he could speak to projects he's done recently or in similar communities, so to kinda get a gauge on that, too, which I think would be helpful to see.
For sure.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm, I think it'd be great to have them come and speak to this, because I feel like we've been working on it, and you especially, very hard for a very long time. And we're to the point where now we can start to like really show, I'm sure you guys like have a picture of what it is, so.
And I think we had an idea that if the board supported, you know, the building proposal that you guys will see in December, then it makes us stronger to go out into the community, or go to the FAC, and go to the Select Board. I will say that I actually got an email yesterday, just coincidentally, from the Stratum Energy Commission. He is like so excited about this project, and he's like, any help you might need. So he might even come next month.
Is that Mike Welty or somebody else?
Um, I'll tell you his name in a minute, yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah, I got him in my email.
Yep. Is everybody on board with that, for the December meeting? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we're playing.
One question, too, did you say it was gonna be like supported with a municipal bond or something like that? Is that how we're gonna, is that the suggestion about how to pay for it, or?
It's a bond?
Yeah.
So we have to pay it out, right?
How does a bond work?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so we talked about that yesterday. Yeah, it's pretty, you know, I think we, I'll take this really seriously, right? Because it is a significant amount of money. But yeah, there's like a bond bank that you go to. Mm-hmm. And then you determine, well, how many years do you want it out for? So for example, you know, you might do a twenty-year bond, but let's say like a furnace's lifespan is twenty years. So you just wanna kind of time the, the bond to the, but obviously, the longer your bond is, the less your payments are.
Yeah, but the more you should pay, the higher total outlay, it's a tough balance.
They also said that the bond bank people could come speak to us, too, I think, right?
They do a great job, I suppose, with the bond bank mutual account.
Yeah.
It's, uh, can be complicated for communities to think about, like, so it's added this year, every year, how long? What is that percentage of a, you know, because it instantly makes your budget more sustainable in the moment when you do bond. And they can also talk about like the difference of like, or the importance of ensuring that your town doesn't, like, you don't want the fire department to have, or your town to have three bonds out while you or their school has a bond out, because that's a lot to tax on your population. And trying to think strategically about planning them out, especially in smaller communities, working together to plan them out so that you're not carrying bonds, multiple bonds within a community, it's better to space them out, or, you know, like two years left on one if you're gonna start another one happening, and things. So they're great about coming and speaking and making, you know, sense of the numbers, they're great.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, we're, I think we also should be prepared to show the data around population growth. Because some of this is, well, yes, you're right, a large part of this is fixing stuff in the old building. There was also, if memory serves, and there's also a pretty significant population growth that's impacting this as well, right? We're looking to grow the school with the population. So even, even if we say, hey, well, it's gonna be, you know, some large number for a brand-new school, but fixing the current ones only this amount, but this doesn't address the population concerns. So we're gonna have to make sure that that's all wrapped together in the discussion. And I don't know what format, I don't know who drives that census data, but I'm just, while, while we're talking about the bond and the spend, we have to make sure we communicate this population wave curve as well, because that's as important as fixing stuff.
So typically, in my experience, you would partner with potentially EEI and Vanwell and do a full presentation, like prepare the building committee, we work in collaboration, because it is multifaceted, right? And they can even have ways of like showing the direct correlation between your population and the additional space, or the, the way that space is currently structured in our building, even if our population must stay the same, it doesn't accommodate our students now, right? So they can do, I mean, they're fantastic, and sort of, and then aligning that with the state policies in our SAU, so you can see that sort of correlation between, they can be really explicit in their presentations. so you can see that sort of correlation between, they can be really explicit in their presentations.
Because that, what you're saying is a little bit different than the enrollment study too, right? I mean, the enrollment study is like one piece about who's going to be here, but the other part is like, how many people are in the town to pay for it?
On the town to pay, on both sides. How many people are in town that pay for it and how many people are going to have kids in the school system? It's both. I actually wasn't thinking about the pay-for-it piece. But if we're, I'm looking at this January 24 date. If we're updating back in the Select Board and Energy Commission and we're gonna, and I know, Jen, you said we're, we're not ready to talk cautious, but I imagine at some point in the next couple of months, we'll have some rough, you know, rough order of magnitude. Imagine we want some rough order of magnitude on population as well. Because again, we have to tie them together. We can't be, if we, if we talk about them in isolation, then people are going to miss pieces. And it has to be all together. And that, but again, it's easy for me to say that because I don't know what it takes to gather that census data. But that just feels like it has to be part of one complete package and story.
So do we want to have the bonding people come out and give a presentation?
Yeah.
Do we want to schedule that for like, I don't know, January or?
I think it'd be really good.
Yeah.
I think, I think bond rates and things are big in people's minds right now. A lot of competition with bond, you'd have to pay a lot more.
So maybe we could do that in January, try to space some things out. And then the census piece, who, who are we needing to?
So if you look at the enrollment study that we shared with you, it does have a page, like I'm looking at it right now. It's page 48 to 53, like the median age in, in Stratum. So if you look at the percentage of the population from 30 to 39, it's 13%, which is kind of like you're talking about like where they're. If, if you're looking from 60 to 69, it's 12%. The highest percent is just 20%, which is between 50 and 59. So it kind of gives you that, like where are, where's the age of the population? So that's in the study and I know median age in Stratum is 46.5.
Interesting. So what, we can, after we get that brief, enrollment study brief, maybe then figure out if we need more.
Have you shared that? Because I don't think I've seen that.
No, we're going to hear that tonight, right?
We're going to hear it tonight.
The enrollment study?
But I don't have a copy. Or am I supposed to?
I know, so, hold on. I thought it was asked you to put in your back for you.
No, so it's referenced, but it's not.
It's referenced, I didn't see it, yeah. I thought you were going to present it tonight, that's why I wasn't.
Yeah, it does say you are.
Oh, well, I don't, I mean, sure. I also want to be clear that I don't, this is not my area of expertise, so I'm not like, I don't, I'm not giving it to you.
It's on the schedule for December.
Wait, I didn't know that ended anything today.
Is that different to people proposing in December?
No, it's the same thing, yeah.
I knew we had a copy, I just haven't actually seen it yet.
I would love to forward it to all of you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's educate ourselves, yeah.
Yep. Okay, so we'll take that off and then we'll put that on December.
Yes, this is not my area of expertise. I would go to school to know this in the meeting.
Data analysis, whole other discipline.
Okay.
This is such a funny like the part of the school board, right?
Explain what? I can make it up as good as everybody else, that's no problem.
Okay, so we'll put that on the December agenda and you'll forward that to us and we'll have time to look at that over. Anything else on the building committee? No? All right, we'll move on to policy.
Cool. Yeah, so there are four policies that are being revised. And then two to be withdrawn. So instead of reading this all aloud to y'all, do you have any questions? What would be helpful? Do you want to just approve as proposed?
A handful of questions, sorry.
Do you have any concerns, Pat?
No. I was a month ago, I honestly don't really remember it. So I will be also referring to the text if you ask any questions.
There's a ton of edits on.
Yes, some of them did have a lot, yeah.
The whole thing.
Kate, are you okay? Any things?
Yeah.
Sophie, do you recall anything about the volunteer, like the definitions of volunteer?
The what?
The volunteer, when you do the IJOC. I was trying to understand the difference, if there's anything relates, the difference between like somebody who's like a volunteer that's like, I don't know, like, there's a guess.
Yes.
Volunteer and there's like lightweight, yeah, there's.
Right.
And Eric, that's exactly why we revised the policy, right?
Okay. I'm going to clear this, I'm sorry.
So, so two reasons why we wanted to revise that policy is, one, we wanted to make sure that it aligned to the background check policy and the, and the definitions for volunteer and designated volunteer, which is most important. And those are, there's, there's criteria, as you can see in the policy, for what a designated volunteer would be. And if they are, then they need to come through Human Resources to make sure that they're background checked. Somebody coming in because it is career day or, you know, those kinds of things, that they're just coming into the school, they're not going to be alone with children, there's no expectation of that. They would not need to have that background check done. But if we, if they're coming in and they're going to be there for the day, there's a potential of them walking a student to a restroom, you know, anything along those lines where they would fall under that designated volunteer piece and we would want to make sure that they, that they had that background check done. So really, there were those two purposes. Really clearly define what a designated volunteer is for that, for that, but also to align it to the background and criminal records check policy as well. And with that, with the criminal records check policy, that was really redone because it was not exactly user-friendly, if you will, before. So including, we included the, the definitions, but also made sure that the, the new law was represented in there that allowed for the superintendent to have a designee to be able to review the criminal background checks. The law, when it first passed, only allowed the superintendent to review those files when they came in. Now it allows them to have a, a one designee for that purpose. And usually, it's the Human Resource Director. So the policy now reflects that as well. So there were some changes, but most of the ones in the criminal background check is around definitions and the designee piece.
There was a definition of designated volunteer, but I didn't quite get it. This might be me being dense, which is okay. I can, I can look at it. I think the criteria where you're saying like, oh, you're taking some, you're going to be alone with a child.
Yep.
Those are scenarios that make sense, but I didn't.
If, if you look under the criminal background check piece, you'll see number seven under, under the definitions. Near the bottom, yep. And you'll see comes in contact with students on a predictable basis, meets regularly with students, blah, 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 blah. So that's, that's why we wanted to make sure that we were doing the volunteer one at the same time to make those connections back.
That makes sense.
Yeah, any other questions or should I make a motion to approve?
I got one more. Are we really putting up signs? Are we going to put up signs about the smoking stuff? I saw that was on like page, it was ADC all around the building. Were you actually going to do that?
Just in Kate's office.
Fifth grades are rough. Year this year.
Says that we shall do it, not that we should do it, that we shall put up. We shall put that up. Anyway, that's all. Thanks, Sophie.
Yeah? Shall I make a motion?
To accept the policies as, unless.
Go for it, please.
As, as modified.
Great. I'd second.
I'll, I'll second it. Great. And then all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thanks. Okay. So moving on to Superintendent Evaluation Committee, Eric.
I unexpectedly had a conflict and was not able to attend last week. So I'll have to get an update and respond back unless Heather, I know you facilitated that meeting unless you provide an update.
Yeah, real quick, we, we're in the process of drafting what the tool is going to look like. You may remember from previous updates, Dr. Asbell, as well as the committee, have requested a 360 evaluation. So we're determining what does that, what does a 360 mean? What does that look like? What does a tool look like for each component of who's going to be doing or participating in the evaluation? There's a lot of great feedback. We presented a draft of a model and got some feedback from that. And so we're going to, the chair and myself will work on another draft to be able to present to the committee in December. And at the December committee meeting, Dr. Asbell will be coming, be coming in to just do an initial review of the goals that were set at the beginning of the year to prepare for the January board, joint board meeting, where there'll be, also be a report.
Heather, is that one in person?
That was what?
That one in person?
That one is in person, yes.
I'll make a note, thanks.
Great. Any, anybody have questions on that? Okay, we'll move on to Safety and Security Task Force.
So Task Force met October 18th. As a reminder for everybody, these are closed-door meetings and agendas notes are confidential because we are reviewing actual safety and security policies and protocols. But just at a high level, the Task Force has recently completed another round of safety upgrades to a variety of schools in the SAU. These were done through financial support from state grants. And just overall, in the SAU, we implemented somewhere north of like $150,000 for the upgrades in various, various schools. So continue to do a lot of work. Currently, two schools are going through their homeland security assessment. SMS did some work with homeland security last year. So I don't, I didn't catch when our next round is, but we've been through.
We've done it once in my year, it was actually like three years ago that we did it. We had a tabletop workshop that we did, that was what you're referring to. But we did homeland security two, three years ago. And actually, our report came like great, like they were, they've done all the things. We've been really fortunate in SAU 16, like as you heard the guy say, like Rich Kane has a great job of keeping us abreast of all the things that we need to be doing so that when we are having those evaluations, we're in really good standing.
Yeah, so one of the comments directly from the Homeland Security rep is that as a whole, SAU 16 is in really good shape and is being used as a template for other schools in the state of New Hampshire. You know, obviously, it's never enough. We're continuously improving across the entire district. Always ought to be done, but overall, we're in, we're in pretty good standing. We did also do some discussions and reviews around the rules and uses of SROs in schools. And so we are looking to come to a decision next month that we can, we can share with the community. So again, my updates are kind of limited because everything is done in confidence for obvious reasons. But that was, that was it.
Great. Anybody have any questions for Ken?
I have a question. So the SRO discussion is something district-wide that you're, the district is going to make a recommendation on or?
No, so right now, it stands right now, CMS and the high school have their own dedicated SROs.
Yep.
The current, one of the current topics discussed is an SRO dedicated for SMS.
Right.
And so we're trying to go through a process to evaluate if that makes sense for us, what the impact is. And so as part of the meeting, we were going through some exercises and discussions with the existing SROs, see what applies, what would apply to SMS, what wouldn't, how it would work. Because there's the, there's a lot of stakeholders, not just for SMS, there's the town, there's the police department. So it will be, there's no real clear process for making the decision. And I think it's kind of coming back to us because we have a, we have a, the budget control piece first, I guess. And then, but obviously, we don't have direct oversight or involvement, so it's, it's a little convoluted. So part of this is also figuring out how is the decision being made. So, but it seems like it's going to come back to the, a, an SMS board recommendation. And then if there's additional follow-on after that, it'll, it'll end up going through the town and Stratum.
But first, the Safety and Security Task Force, which is a district-wide, I'm.
Oh, yeah, sorry, okay, yes.
So that district-wide task force is going to make a recommendation for us, for you to bring back to this board?
It was, they weren't making a recommendation specifically for SMS. So the Task Force is a group in SU 16. It consists of various chiefs of police, consists of, we have a Task Force Director, gentleman named Rich Kane. All the principals are there, Esther, Chris Druzyk, Heather's there, and a host of others. And basically, we meet once a quarter going over existing safety improvements, recommendations, incident reviews. We will also have direct conversations with local police departments on anything, you know, any instances to go over. And so one of the activities, the last meeting, was to review what an SRO actually does. It's a lot more complicated than just having a police officer in the car cutting. So it's not they're making a recommendation specifically for SMS. We were understanding what do the existing SROs do for CMS and EHS and seeing what, if any of that applies to SMS. And how do we, how do we make, how do we make the decision to move forward?
Great, thank you.
Thank you, that was helpful. Anything else on that?
I just have a quick, I feel like just anecdotally, I've seen police here more. Okay, so you've had conversations or?
Yep.
Yeah.
I've had with Chief King and Burch. And additionally, starting back last spring and then into the fall, as they're hiring, there's a shortage of police officers. So they're hiring and they're bringing on new police officers. They're expected to be in and out of the building just to familiarize themselves with the building. Because they're so new to Stratum. For a long time, it was the same police officers, they knew where every room was, they knew where teachers in every room. And as that force has changed, Chief King has asked that they come to the building, you know, once a week on shift or whatever, even if they're not here for very long, like an hour, just walk around the building. They're trying to get here as often as they can. That said, it's not like I'm like, oh, what day did they show up?
Yeah, yeah.
Because they're literally so short-staffed and, but they've been great. They've been coming in and just saying hi to the kids, they all come. The first time they'll often come with Officer Manas so she can kind of show them the lay of the land and then they'll come independent of that.
Yeah, I've definitely seen it. Great. All right. Communications and Community Engagement Committee.
Yes. So, long story short, we, we have a survey going out in January. There was a lot of conversation in our last meeting. You know, are we surveying parents and taxpayers about the SAU or about their school? And so there, there was a lot of conversation. But also, and then what if you're answering for multiple kids, right? So you have one kid at CMS, one kid at SMS. It's tricky to, you know, one school might offer great communication, one school doesn't. So anyway, there was just a lot of conversation about that. But it will be going out in January on QualTrex. Lots of QR codes everywhere. I think it'll be highly accessible. And it really is overall an assessment of the SAU, so at the SAU level.
Great.
What is the communication and where are you guys getting more information?
Great. Anybody have questions on that? Okay, awesome. I guess we'll move on to Administrative Report.
So if you have any questions about what we've already shared with you, welcome to ask. And then Kate's going to review the fall benchmark data.
Okay. I had a question, just about, are we still down to the three buses? Okay.
Although they're here like four minutes after.
There, I have to be honest with you, I know it's frustrating for our families and I sympathize with that. I feel like Trish is incredibly good about communicating with us and reaching out and trying to be part of solutions and. I, I just feel like it's unfortunate for everybody all around, right? Like it's unfortunate for Trish because she's trying so hard. They're not, they're networking, right? They're just in positions. And then it's frustrating for families who, children aren't getting home until after fourth of August. Like I just, it's such an unfortunate situation about how we look at this. And I just appreciate families, because families are very patient with us about like, oh, it's 3:20, I'm sending an email. They're kind of, they're just great about responding. And I think it helps when we communicate if things are.
Definitely.
I do, I do think those emails are nice that come from, you know, Mandy. Yeah, because it just feels like, we know, we know. I did want to ask about the Alice drills just because you indicated maybe there was something you wanted to further discuss, but we can do it after.
It's because of kind of what I'm trying to talk about, we can't really talk about it in public. It's something we need to talk in on public because it's a matter of safety.
Okay.
Fall benchmark data. So we opened the fall benchmark. We always wait for students to settle in after the summer. And research would tell you that waiting four to six weeks and letting kids ease into the year is important for adjustment so that you're getting accurate data. So we wait about six weeks, we open up a benchmark window, we do all kinds of assessments from kindergarten up through fifth grade. So when we described to you the work we're doing through framework, a huge piece of that work was to pull universal data at grade levels and really start here as a frame of reference as we started figuring out interventions and support for particular students. So it's not as big as I was hoping. But you'll see everything from the BAME in kindergarten to a BMI. You look at, these are speech and OT screenings. You won't see these in the upper grade levels, so you're going to watch these very a bit.
But I want to interrupt you. Do you mind speaking into the microphone? Just.
Can I hold it like Janet?
This may actually just be a really good reminder. If your microphone's not on, it needs to be on and you need to talk into the mic only because when they do the minutes, she, she needs to hear you to be able to do the minutes and will require a buzz signal to make sure the minutes are accurate. So as much as I hope this is supposed to.
I don't remember what I said, so I just said it. So you're going to watch the.
I don't remember what I said. So I just said it. So you're going to watch these assessments vary from grade to grade. But especially at the kindergarten level, you'll see speech and OT assessments. And then you'll see everything specific from, you know, capital letters to blending to rhyming. And we just look at this holistically. So in the red zone, you're looking at students who, and a lot of these assessments have cutoff scores that tell you what's in the red zone. But red might be more significantly behind benchmark, yellow, a little bit closer, and then your percentage of students that are on track. And then in case anybody was missing, we've, missing might indicate a student was unable to access the assessment for a reason, or we've had some new students join SMS and that is some of your missing. So overall, you'll see a majority of our data is with students on track as far as where they should be at the start of kindergarten. So, and then down here at the bottom, there are some math assessments. We do the counting objects inventory with kindergarten. And then we also do the iReady diagnostic with all grade levels. They're all on track because they are, oh, it's over there. Yeah, sorry. The headings are different right here. Can you see me moving that? The on-track shifts from here to here. To make that clear. So there is no below benchmark for the kindergarten baseline. So everybody's at 100%.
We love that. So let's just leave it right there.
Set the bar high and we keep it high. All right. So then you move into first grade. You're going to see, again, on the left-hand side here, a little bit different, right? We're looking at correct letter sounds, whole words read, a little bit more diagnostic as we dig into students who are beginning to read. Same information here as far as red, yellow, and on-track. Math, the assessment's different there. We do the hiding assessment where it's just what it sounds like. There might be five cubes. Maybe I hide three of them. How many are, you can see two. How many are hidden to see where they are. And there are sums to five, for example. That'd be an example of the hiding assessment. And then we have the iReady diagnostic. Based on this, we take a look at who qualifies for what intervention, right? So if I'm having trouble with sums to five, I can get a quick nine-session intervention. I'm practicing that, reassess with the same exact assessment to then look at those gains and growths through our intervention model. With literacy, the intervention's a bit longer. As we know, literacy is a bit more in-depth. But this allows us to target our interventions to then compare the progress monitoring we're doing to the baselines to look for those gains along the way.
Kate, is the Fanta-Simpanel like, like where you expect it to be, or?
Yep. So the Fanta-Simpanel Benchmark, yeah.
I mean, just for first grade, I mean, obviously.
Yeah, I would say the baseline there would be similar to where we start. Huge year for growth. Like, that'll be fun data to watch over time.
Yep.
And that's tricky. You know, those kindergartners leave, I know this doesn't necessarily mean much, but we look for them to be leaving at like a D. And they might enter back in at like a B and C. There's not tons of difference between a B, C, and D, or B and C text. So those gains will happen quickly with explicit instruction. And often, that's, you're looking at summer. Which is okay. Kids should be playing at the beach. Get them on the microphone. Outside of nature. Okay. So second grade, we have the Benchmark Assessment System. You'll see that consistently throughout. The Words Their Way as well. There, we have 82% of students on track. The Words Their Way, which is a spelling inventory, 96% on track. And then you have your math data below.
Can I jump in on the math data?
I was going-
Okay, you're going to do it. Good, great.
Yes. Specifically with the, with the assessment that we gave the interview.
How important to talk about, like how-
So we will actually be, you can add on if you miss anything. So this here with 28% of students on track with the hiding assessment. We met with the second grade team and actually had a great conversation on that because that ended up being lower than you would expect. And we learned that we might have had different, different definitions of what fluency is, or what does an automatic response or a quick answer sound like. So as we're scoring these, because these are interviews done under best practice, which is kind of one-on-one, which you can get a ton of information from, but we might have had different ways of looking at that. So it opened up a whole conversation for us to talk about at the universal level. If we're saying a student can answer quickly, what does quickly mean to me and you? And make sure we're on the same page. As well as, this gave us a huge opportunity to just do some universal instruction. When you have a percentage of students, you know, 28% who are not able to demonstrate a learned skill, classroom teachers can just pull that into their universal instruction, dig into that a little bit. And we're going to be re-administering that assessment soon. I have a second grade teacher here. Did you already give it, Jen, this?
I think it was-
It's this week, as we speak.
This week, yeah.
As we speak, we're reblessing and reassessing to see if, in fact, now that we've cleared up our definitions, as well as done some universal instruction, we expect to see a huge jump in that. Did you want to add anything?
I love that you did such a great job.
Okay. And there's your iReady diagnostic piece. 82% of students are on grade level there. And that's more like a big snapshot of all math skills. And we're really assessing students, if you were to look at the iReady data, it would look yellow, if you remember the colors from last year, because you're assessing it where they're at with the end of second grade understanding. So yellow, a year below, perfect. We should be. And then we get there. Third grade, similar picture here. You have your F and P assessments with 88% proficient. Words Their Way is a spelling inventory, again, 84% proficient. And then you have the addition and subtraction, as well as the iReady diagnostic that we use to measure student, just to get baselines for the fall. And again, interventions were created for students, whether they were in the red or yellow. You might increase intervention for students, right, who need more. Could be an increase in frequency, how often they receive that support. It could be an increase in intensity, the size of their groupings. So all of that, all of those conversations and decisions come from this baseline data.
Kate, can I just ask, iReady seems to be such a big deal for my kid. Is it over, like, multiple days and they have to do certain number of questions?
A lot of classrooms do it a couple of, over the course of a couple of days. Two to three days, depending on how long it takes students.
And do you like chain them to their chair for-
We do, yes. Yes.
How long is it?
It, it's upwards of maybe 60 minutes total to take the full assessment. A lot of teachers will break it down into 30 minutes and 30 minutes. It can take more or less, depending on how long it takes a student to answer a question. We have some really careful thinkers that'll take a really long time to do that. And kids who click through really fast.
Right.
If you click through really fast, I do get a little rush flag and we have them retake it. But for a lot of students, the classroom teachers try to break, break that up. So 30 minutes, the questions are adaptive. So as they answer, they might get harder. That can lead to a source of frustration for some. It also can meet kids right where they're at and figure out right, right where they need to be. And so it's given over the course of just a couple of days. And they try to lessen the blow with like-
And we have seen it takes longer as the kids age. So kindergarten is shorter than, you know, I, I think it's, the time it takes depends on really the grade level.
It's math on a computer, which is unnatural.
Specific to-
It's unnatural. So a state assessment, math at a computer feels unnatural, right? You can't talk to anybody. I could use paper. It's another layer. It just kind of feels. And there's brain breaks built in, you know, so they get to play a little game or do a little activity to kind of help break that up a bit. But I don't know any students running around saying they love it. Fourth grade data's here. A common trend we found is our students are becoming more and more on track with literacy data. And the gap in math does tend to get bigger. And that makes sense with the, how complex the concepts become and the intertwinedness of all of those standards and strategies really melding together as they get older with the math, for sure. But this is typical, I think, for what we would see at the start of a school year. The foundations of multiplication for the interview there really allowed us to figure out who needs some fact strategy practice, knowing that that's really important, even when you're looking at figuring equivalent fractions and beyond. So that'll help us to dig in a bit. And again, within those interventions, we're progress monitoring those students all the time to make sure they're in the right intervention and it's actually working.
And I think we shared last month, too, when we showed you the results of intervention, those kids that are getting intervention, even just one cycle of it, are graduating from intervention pretty quickly because it is such targeted explicit instruction in the area that still needed more practice, which is really nice to see that the interventions are successful and getting them back into the regular, universal classroom all the time.
Yeah, just a point to make. The Benchmark Assessment, the Words Their Way and the iReady is something you'll see again in the, in the winter benchmark session. The Foundations of Multiplication interview, that'll be different because we'll be interviewing, we'll be looking at different skills. That assessment is given again at the end of interview, at the end of intervention to look at group growth and compare apples to apples. But you won't see that again. We'll still be looking at that skill. Teams will talk about, what do we really need to be assessing now, to kind of do a big scoop to see who's, who's got what, or who needs what. And then there's fifth grade. So you have 87% of students meeting benchmark for the F and P, 43% on Words Their Way, 58%, we looked at Foundations of Fractions, knowing that that's a huge part of the fifth grade curriculum, and then 77% on the iReady. We are a couple of years into a new spelling and phonics program. So you're going to see that trend over the course of the data as kids are getting that earlier instruction around phonics and phonemic awareness, starting all the way in kindergarten. Take years to see that come, come through.
That's what I was going to ask.
But we need it. We need it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to ask that. Does it concern you how many red and yellow there are in Foundations of Fractions? Or do you just see that as an opportunity?
I always see it as an opportunity, for sure. And I, we have a really strong math team. I mean, we have four people who are allowed to provide that intervention and do that work. And fractions is such a huge unit over the course of fifth grade that they're going to see it multiple times in multiple ways. So they'll continue to grow them.
So then you would, would you expect, so the, all the math applications that are not the iReady, they all seem to be in the mid-50s range, with the exception, the second grade, we mentioned, it was 28%. Is that what, is that what you expect? I mean, I see the word "on track." And in my brain, I'm interpreting that as the expect, of, of, it's, it's coordinated to be the, the expected place. But I'm seeing, you know, half the students are on track. Can we say a little more about what the right expectation is? Because again, I see something on track. I would think more students than-
We'd like everybody, right? Yeah.
And it might be a word, it might be a definition, a wording.
Mm-hmm. You know what? I think there's a lot of factors to consider when you're looking at the 58%. So to picture this assessment, you have students sitting down one-on-one with either their classroom teacher or a math interventionist or a math specialist. And they're being asked a few different questions about their strategies to solve these math questions. So I don't have a fractions one on the top of my head, but if it was like a subtraction question, it's not like pencil and paper, go ahead and solve this. It's a matter of like, if you had 93 and had to take away 17, how would you do that mentally? And what they're noting in that information that they gather is if the child used effective strategies to solve that, ultimately getting the right answer is a piece of it. But it's just about a, a piece of the pie when you're looking at that. So I think that data speaks to like the strategy students have. It allows our teachers to target, to equip students with a bigger toolbox of more strategies.
Piggyback on that, too. So for example, when they get into the multiplication division, there are like six known effective strategies. And part of that is, how many of the sixth can they use with fluency and efficiency and flexibility? Because that's really part of number sense, is being flexible with your strategies. And so they may be able to be accurate the very first time, but that's not what's going to keep them on track. They want to know that you've got five of the six strategies, and you can fluidly move between them to be efficient with your thinking. And so that's part of that. So like, something like iReady doesn't actually know what strategy you use. You just push the answer, right? And so what this does is says, like, you may be able to get to the right answer, but we want to know you can do it in multiple ways because it's going to look different at different times through your math learning. And so it really is asking for a much deeper understanding of that concept. And so that is part of why you'd see that number. So some kids are like, I learned my strategy. I don't want to know any others. Well, you need to. So it kind of gives us that information and allows us to understand their depth of-
And when you look at the, you know, the Benchmark for literacy is a little bit easier to understand. When you look at the math one, what's red and what's yellow doesn't mean they're like two years below grade level or a year below grade level. We made decision rules to figure out what our interventions were. So let's say they needed to demonstrate to Kate's point, six strategies to be on, to be, to, to complete the assessment completely. We might have said, if they completed five out of six or four out of six, they're on track. If they completed three out of six, we're going to go yellow. And that allowed us to have a decision rule to say, who makes the cutoff for intervention? Very few students up here had zero or one or even two strategies. But they might not have been demonstrating the five as consistently as we would like to have seen. So these, this data specific to Stratum and to here, it would look very different at other schools, I think. But we make decision rules based on our student body, if that makes sense.
Can I ask you a question? On the iReady, you said it was adaptive. Is it normed somehow? So like, when I look at the 77% or whatever on this one specifically, did that-
Yep. It's grade level norm. So if I'm adapting this way, it's still, it's still going to call me as, as on-track for second grade, even though I'm doing fourth grade work. When I pull up that specific student report, I'll get all the details of really where they're at. But they're part of the green or yellow.
So if you click on all students at a glance, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So if there's a second grader doing fourth grade math or something or English, how do you engage them in the classroom so that they don't get bored?
Lots of ways. A lot of the work we try to do with our teachers through professional development and studying best practices in math is, you can do a lot of different things as a classroom teacher to engage students at a variety of levels and still have common conversations. So there's a lot of tasks you can provide your students, or a lot of opportunities for learning that we would call, a phrase that we would use would be low floor, high ceiling, which is just what it sounds like. So there might be a question stated, we're all working on this specific standard because I'm a second grade teacher and I have to teach the standards. But I know full well, I have kids that are operating here at this level. So they're able to take accounting collection, for example, and organize it to represent fractions or multiplication. But these students are still working on grouping by twos and counting by twos as they go. So there's a lot of ways to provide opportunities for students to take it where they need to. And so if you're a thoughtful instructor and practitioner, you're constantly creating those opportunities for students. You also can pull small group instruction. It's not all whole group instruction. You can pull small groups and develop students with where they're at as well. So there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot of different ways to do that.
Kate, if you click on all students at a glance, what are the things we wanted to be able to show you through our data work? So this is just a, we took the student names off, obviously. And so this is all of our kindergarten students. So the green that you're seeing right there- Let me go back to this. I'm sorry? Let me go back to this so they can see that. Sure. So I can, I know what it is. I can just say it. Yep. So the green is, through all of our assessments that we did with kindergarten, the Fall Benchmark, these students' data showed that they didn't need any level of intervention, universal, embedded, anything. They just, their data showed they were right where they needed to be. And this is, so that was all students in kindergarten that are in green. If you go further down- We call it good to go. Yep, good to, we call that the good to go. So the blue section you'll see is those students who, in literacy in particular, for this one that you're seeing, suggest that they should be on a watch list. And what that means, just for the classroom teacher, like, their data is kind of cuspy. They seem okay right now. I can give you another example. So in, this is kindergarten, but in first grade, if a, if a student reads at a B, we look back and see what they ended at the end of kindergarten. If they ended the end of kindergarten a B and they started a B, we're like, maybe they need some intervention. They're not kind of breaking through. But if they ended at a D and started at a B, we're like, oh, they made the progress they needed to last year. They just had a little summer regression, right? So they might then be on the watch list. Let's just make sure that now that we're back in school, they're kind of kicking back, right back up and, you know, picking up where they left off. So they become the watch list students. The next group-
And that goes back to those decision rules we talked about, like, what is the cutoff for watch, right? And we can cater that to the group of students you're looking at.
The next section, the purple section, is embedded, which means we meet with the teachers at a grade level. And we sit down and say, these students that are identified here need some universal intervention within the classroom, delivered either by the classroom teacher or the classroom ESP paraprofessional. It might be, Kate needs five minutes of fluency every day. So could the classroom teacher do that with her? Could the ESP do that with her? But that's embedded. It's not done by a member outside of the classroom community. And that's, the data tells us that they just need a little boost. It's not an instruction that's pulled out or something like that. The next group, which I would say is pinkish-red, I'm not really sure. Those are our quick match. So this data suggests, we talked about math, this student needs three days a week for 30 minutes for nine sessions. And then we'll assess them again. And they'll either go back in the classroom or they'll get another dose of that. Those are sort of, we know the data. We know this quick match lines up perfectly with what they need. That very last section tells us that they might need, their data was sort of in multiple areas indicative of that we need a further conversation as a larger CST group to really come up with what we call a tailored support plan. So they needed something in literacy. Maybe they needed something with OT. And we're seeing something with social emotional services. There's some real anxiety. And so we sit down and we meet with our, our TIPS team, that's our data team. And we talk specifically in-depth about that student and come up with a tailored support team that might involve multiple service providers and multiple services. And so that's how our, if you look at our, like, proportionately, like, that's what our data typically looks like. And then we have that for all of our grades.
Might even need more assessment to-
Yeah.
What is quick match again? I'm sorry.
So the intervention is already sort of predetermined. It's that like, we know you're going to do exactly this. It's going to be six weeks, it's going to be nine, or three weeks. It's going to be nine sessions, that kind of thing. And that's probably most typical, because most, we, you get good at what you're doing and you know what your data is going to show. And then it's typically one area usually, and you're like, we just need to give them a little extra. And then the problem-solving group is more like, we need to know more about this kid. This is more of a complex profile. And we want to make sure we're understanding the full picture so we can treat the whole child. Because if it's, you know, really driven by anxiety, that would be the first thing we address. We're not going to be worried about their math fluency if they're so anxious that we can't even get to that. So we need to address that piece first.
We made these for each grade level and sat with grade level teams to talk about, looking at their grade levels as a whole. And then we could dig into specific students and what their quick match was or what their embedded support would be.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Sure.
Just, I have two questions. When you're assessing the children, whose standard are you using? National standard or state standard or?
So certain screeners have, come with specific norms that you should be using. So it might say, for example, the iReady one, when you give, it's aligned to national norms for the Common Core state standards. And it says, if they've answered these questions, they're one year below grade level for second grade, or they're on grade level for second grade. So those come naturally standardized. Same thing for like something like F and P or Fanta-Simpanel reading assessments. It tells you which grade level, should be reading at It tells you which grade level, should be reading at what level. So if it says, okay, it's the beginning of first grade, they should all be reading at a D, you have that norm already ready for you based on the assessment you gave.
So when you're assessing, this is second part of, when you're assessing, whose method are you using? Is that the method developed by UNH or is it the method developed by teachers or...
It comes with the program. So Fanta-Simpanel are experts in their field. They created it with their program to say these are the norms. They are nationally normed with other kinds of literacy data. I mean, you could find the alphabet A to Z for all different kinds of reading levels from a variety of people, but we use the one that the assessment created or the people who made the assessment. We might make more decision rules based off of that, right? We might say, we don't have anybody reading at a D, so I guess our cutoff's going to be a C and we're going to work with what we have, right? So it depends. You took the names off for all these grade levels, Kate. You got them all.
Miracles happen sometimes.
Fourth grade. If you wanted to see like a picture of like first grades. Second grade.
I would go back to it. If you go to second grade, that's the data from when we did the original math assessment. And you saw the quick match in second grade. That was because if you remember, we did that and we were like, oh, this is really, that was what was so informative. Like when you have these visuals, you're like, okay, we need to dig in this. Something bigger here. We know our students. This is not how they ended last year. We need to look at this. And it was really great conversation about ensuring we all have collective understanding as well.
Starting from the bottom, I have to say, fourth grade's here. And then fifth grade. This data would indicate that intervention is working. If you're looking at the screen section, it gets bigger by the age. And there's far less, like let's look for an example here. Here's your literacy quick matches. You have two kids receiving literacy intervention like that in fifth grade. And a small cohort here for the math. And the math is so short, right? It's a nine-session intervention based on that one interview. So it does support the system that we have in place because you'd like those numbers to move over time.
I would also like to, I think, to sort of, you know, draw the parallel too to like, this is why we have a math specialist. This is why we're doing all that professional development. And the board had supported Carolyn Worcester before we had Hana, is that we recognize with the kids in math instruction and math understanding and the depth that we're asking kids to get to, we also needed to adjust some of our practices and grow our understanding. And I think it's great that we're actually seeing this data now because it's going to show that like the work that we're doing as educators in our classrooms is going to pay off for our kids as we see that. And we expect to see that because before we didn't have a system like this to even identify the students to this level of expertise and specificity. So it feels really good coming from administrative perspective that we can see this and then do something about it. We're seeing some data that didn't make sense and then not having the staff or the expertise to then respond. It feels really nice to have a full system for...
You'd be able to look at this over time too. This is just your fall benchmarks. You can lay this next to January. You can lay this next to May and look at those gains over time.
I was just about to ask, is that how you're doing it? Is it like on a monthly basis, just month over month you're doing it?
So it depends on which assessment it is. So if I'm doing a nine-week math intervention or nine-session math intervention in three weeks, I'm reassessing because I'm ready to go. We've been digging in. Versus maybe in literacy, we're doing more of a comprehensive six weeks. So I really don't want to assess too early, although I'm checking their progress as we go. I don't want to do a formal assessment until I've had that time because you're looking at the response to the intervention.
And what you're talking about is progress monitoring? So that's for the students that might be receiving intervention and then like the bigger benchmark, you do three times a year.
Yeah, we have, everybody who's providing intervention this year, part of our framework that we're working on is they're, they're really tracking their fidelity data too. Are the students coming to the interventions? What's happening there? And that's not to check up on what they're doing because they do a phenomenal job, but it's to make sure that we put this plan in place. Did it actually happen? Maybe they were absent, you know, we're evaluating and we shouldn't be here. So that's going to help us to just be really clean in analyzing our data and growth. That's all I have.
That's great. It's very interesting. Thank you for sharing that.
Any other questions?
I think it's fantastic. It's very nice work. Thank you.
Feels good.
Great. Thank you.
Ken's going to do the enrollments study. I'm looking at that going, oh, boy, do I have to go back to school between now and December.
Okay, well, we'll, I'll look at it and then figure it out.
No, I need the real intensive problem solving.
Kate, may I say, so I don't usually have the opportunity to do this, so I just want to thank our teachers in the room as well for all the work that you've done there. We really appreciate you too.
They're amazing.
Yes, these teachers, math interventionists represented back there.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to old business. Does anybody have anything for old business?
Just a reminder, the DEI training is November 29th, Wednesday, from six to ni, sorry, six to 7:30.
Everybody looks like, whoa.
My brain's gone. Six to 7:30. Just make sure it's on your calendars, please.
Anything else?
And reach out if you want to come hang out at SMS. I read to the first grade, a little first grade read aloud this week and it was so cute.
Aren't they just like, oh.
They're so cute. Great. I want to come back a lot.
Please come back.
Yeah, I'll reach out.
They love that.
Great.
Was it the whole grade?
No, just one first grade class, yeah.[1648.04]